This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'll open the special meeting April 8th, 2024. Call it to order at 6:30 PM. Any additions for the agenda tonight or corrections? Take a vote to, or we'll actually, so moved, is there a second? Second, seconded by Councilor Norman.
Councilor Wagner.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Councilor Norman.
Hi.
Councilor Webb.
All right.
So she can.
Okay, moving right into priority list discussion.
Okay. So start with the Corey Hill manhole flats up, all the things. So this part of it is the overflow pipe that's part of the springboard project, which will come back down. We have that as one of the solutions. And then the other one is the OXBO helping us do the work on the manholes. So we noticed a little something. The first four days, no, the first five days were great with that company. The sixth and seventh day, they sent a younger crew and they didn't get as many manholes per day. So Jeff made an executive decision to not have them do that three other days because there were a couple of reasons. One, we weren't getting our, it was costing us $5,000 a day. We wanted to hit it minimum five manholes and that wasn't going. Two, it was the younger crew and we saw how that worked with the vacuum testing. The younger crew kind of skipped over if they didn't like it. The third reason was, is because we had that kind of dry spell, the water table came down. So they could see a little staining, but there wasn't the water coming through it like in the previous days that they'd worked. So he did not have them do the last three days. We did seven days, got 30 manholes and we are putting in the budget, the equipment to be able to do them ourselves from now on. That will be in the budget. You guys will see that in sewer. So that left 15,000 on the table that you guys had designated through ARPA for that project. So I'm kind of going to jump around a little because I got a, the right below that is the Louisiana pressure reducing valve removal. Remember we've been talking about that. It's up towards Mellinger. It really kind of restricts the water because it has to go around this pressure reducing valve. And Andy Perdue is doing the block from H to I. So, and Robert Watts is who we typically have diggers. So we're going to go from I to Mellinger down the center of the road. Because right now the water line's on the far edge of the right way. We're going to line it all up and Andy's new stuff is in the center of the road, right? So it kind of goes over, back, over, back, over. So, because it all existed on the edge of the right way to start with. But when we made him replace the concrete asbestos, which is our goal to replace that whole line, we made him move his new line to the middle of the road. So below him, it's on the edge, it's his in the middle. And we want that, everything we can touch. So we're wanting to use that 15 grand to do the rest of the three blocks all the way to Mellinger. Gets the PRV removal out and gets that whole section to the bottom of G would be brand new water line. And then we'll just have from G down to B would still, that will have to be another project. So that's what happened with the manhole and the PRV removal. Springboard, we just submitted our request for release of funds and our certification of the environmental. And so once they're, the state's review, I think ends on, I want to say May 10th. Their rates, then we could request any monies. But, so that's one of the things for, and it's a timeline. So we had to have so much public time, then we send it to the state, they have to have so much public time, then that closes and you can request funds. We don't need any funds from the springboard right this minute, right? Engineering's keeping track of that and grant administration hasn't had a lot of work yet because the environmental was done under the design phase. Where am I going with that? I have so many things in my head. So that's where we're at with the springboard CDBG. And oh, the two things, part of that that I want to give you guys a heads up is, as you know, we're doing the pump station. We're buying it ourselves and we went back and forth a lot with CDBG because they want you to buy America, build America, the BABA requirements. We could not find the housing of the pump station. We could buy America. The pump and some components in there, we couldn't. So Robert, the engineer, worked with CDBG and the manufacturers to prove the product we need, we cannot find an American version. So they're allowing us to go with the version we wanted, which we are glad because it matches our other pump stations. So we want to have to train our guys on different setup or different fixes or maintenance. And they're allowing us to buy that and the bridge over Adams separate out of the contract. So we can buy them so we don't get the contractor's markup. And because we need the lead time of ordering those and having them produced so that the timing all kind of lines up, that you're in the work water window and we have the pump station, you know, everything's got to line up. And neither of those firms are making us put down a deposit. We have money in the pool account where we could put a deposit and basically float the cost until our reimbursement came. But we're glad we don't have to do that.
Joseph, can I back us?
Sure.
I'm sorry, back up to the INI class of those. So those 15 manholes that we didn't do because of the approximately 15.
Yeah.
So we had 45 scheduled.
About, well, we were hoping 50, we were hoping one day, 10 days. But some of the worst ones took more than their share of time in a day.
So are they by, did you, I mean, are they less severe than the 30? I mean, are, are, are they going to be put in a future next year?
When our guys get the equipment, if we, if we get it through the budget July 1st, they'll purchase the equipment. So right when we hit the rainy season, they'll finish the list we had.
Okay.
And then start on a new list by priority. Cause Jonathan's got the manhole bible. He's the holder of all the manhole descriptions and inspections and all of that. And so he's got his eyes on which ones, the new, the second list needs to be made.
Okay.
We haven't developed it yet, but he's got that, we're going to have him go through that again and check his inspection reports to the new list. But they'll finish the list we have.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Blake Bathroom Fix, I'm waiting for a couple of things. I need Blake to come remove. There's a weird light that doesn't work, that was like a floodlight for the flagpole.
Oh yeah.
It's blocking us from taking, it comes through and we can't mess with it because it's electrical and it's commercial. So I'm waiting for Blake to remove that so Mitch can slide the metal off and fix the facade there. That's all that's left is cutting the like foot and a half of hunky plywood, putting the new plywood and then putting a new facade board and making sure that the metal hangs over the edge. Cause it was too close and it rotted and wicked up. The Louisiana water main upgrades, so the sections, like I said, from H all the way to Mellinger should be done by June 30th. Cause they're in this fiscal year. Because they're, we're going to use the ARPA money. Andy's already got his being dug up for G to H and then we'll go H to Mellinger. Is that right? I don't remember. They'll do G to A, H to I, we'll do I to Mellinger. The street, the letters read get me sometimes. Louisiana and North-South connection, spell check didn't help me either. Surveying is done. We need the truck, trees dropped and hold off. So I gotta get Mike or Weller or somebody up there to talk, tell me what they'll charge to take them out. But there's not probably more than two loads and chump truck, depending on if Mike will do chump truck. We don't know.
This conference will now be recorded.
Somebody's going to think it's crazy.
Is there going to be stump removal in that too, or?
Well, so it almost has to be a separate one. So the engineers have like a strata picture. So whoever gets that, laying the lifts of gravel and the compacted lifts will probably be the same group.
Okay.
Like somebody want, coming in with an excavator to prepare the base and then just running loads of compacted gravel over it. It run first, then gravel, all that. So yeah, we will have some stumps, but Tim said none of them are huge. They're all kind of spindly, older or some hardwood. When he went up there and marked them all and walked the project.
I drove up there a couple of weeks ago and they're, they're putting in the sidewalks on I, I believe.
Yeah, they've got a lot of work going on there.
They got a lot of work. If you haven't been up there for a while, it's kind of a thing to say. Have they paved or they're ready to pave?
Not, not I, but they will be paving I and then he's trying to go across and put in the other I as well. So that's kind of, we're requiring him, that was one of the things about when we connect the water line all the way up. We're requiring him, we're going to put in one valve on the line. He's got to put in three because we're requiring him to have zone shut offs how we really should. Like the olden days, they never put any valves in and then you're like taking 400 people off instead of the eight homes or the 12 homes on each side. So that was one of the things Jeff's like, we have to, you gotta make him put, we're like, well, it's in the public works standard. So there we go. And the mill houses and the sewer line replacement, the contract's been signed. I was waiting on the Five Star scheduler to, to get that date scheduled. Five Star's got a lot going on out here with their same crews. So I think they're trying to figure out what order, but it's all ready to go. The homeowners are ready for all of it. So that, we're hoping that gets done by the end of the fiscal year. We'd love for that to be just off the plate. So that's our goal. Street improvement plans, that's still, it's, oh, plans execution. That's not right. I think that was meant to be SCA. Do I have SCA on here? Weird. I don't know why. It's street improvements plan.
Yeah, that's SCA.
But it's SCA. We were awarded, we have all the bids back now. I believe that Five Star was the low bid for paving as well.
Oh.
We had four firms bid and Five Star was the lowest with like just over 200,000 and the rest were 250. So we did call them all and make sure we were apples to apples. Everyone was preparing to do the exact same grinding, square footage, because a couple of them need grinded off. And then all the same things and they were, so they were the low qualified bidder.
Will Five Star be the first they've ever?
No, they did Rose Avenue and then they did, they do River in Umatilla, I think.
And up in Arkansas.
Okay, yeah, but in Arkansas.
Yeah.
Oh, that was Five Star. So they missed. They've been back here a few times.
All right.
Yeah.
Cool.
Crack ceiling, we're hoping Wayne loves it as much as Austin did. Cause they're getting prepped for that, for where they're going to crack seal. And the INI plan, that was, that's still a public works committee. The UGB, I called the county because I hadn't heard if they had the reading of the ordinance to change our UGB. And they had had the first reading on March 27th. The next one, the second reading will be April 10th. And then their ordinances, because they're a county agency, don't take effect for 90 days. So we won't even get the MAP amendment until July. That's a state law. I looked it up because I asked the girl, why 90? And she goes, I don't know. It's like a law or something. And I was like, okay. So I was like, county ordinance says it's a state law. Cause I thought, that's ridiculous. We're going to have the same damn MAP for till July, even though it's changed. But, um, where was I?
ARPA.
Oh, ARPA. So we have a little bit of ARPA. I believe the second, oh, you guys, so it'll be the first meeting in May. Angie and I are going to bring you a sheet of what's left and then what staff, where staff thinks it would be the most useful and have you guys decide how to kind of fill in, delve out the last of that. I think there's like 65,000, I wanted to say, left in ARPA, last time I looked. So, and there's, you know, there's projects we could earmark it for lots of things. Corey Hill Stormwater Connectivity Master Plan, that's on the back burner for Robert because we have so many projects with the engineers, that's just in their queue. The SDC Increase Study, that we need to put some money for the study into the budget. With all the stuff we have the engineering firm doing, we want to, we want to just see if we can't go out for another firm and do a bid, like we did with the sewer study or the, you know, because the SDC, they have to grab like from all the other agencies. And so it's really probably quicker and more efficient to pay someone $15,000 or $20,000 to just do the whole thing. But we'll, we'll see if the budget can support it, we'll put the money. That's where we'll put the money and then we'll, if budget committee passes it, then we can do that.
So when you bring it to us in the budget next, or in May, will you give us a prices, the cost of that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have in the notes, like so much of this line is this much for the SDC study. And kind of, or it might be on the cover page of each fund. That's sometimes where we tell you where things are hiding in there.
We've been talking about this for several years.
Yeah, we needed the water master plan done.
Oh, that's right.
By Oregon Health Authority and that's been done now.
Okay.
Yeah. Sidewalk Master Plan, that's still Public Works Committee. Lake Campground Project, as we said, the application was ready. There were the funding gaps and we'll need to reapply kind of with a chunk of the project. Whether we get some of the first work done ourselves or we split into three or something. The other thing related to the OPRD grant, since it's not anywhere on here and I want to tell you guys about it, is after the meeting, Scott approached me because the people running the Lager Stadium Campaign had gone to like a fundraising conference to try and figure out how do they get more of those? And all of the people at the campaign convention said, well, you should have your city apply for OPRD. All of, there's a number of school stadiums that have been, have, the city has written a grant to Oregon Parks and Recreation for their school stadium. Because there is no mechanism in the state's funding for schools that helps with like athletics or that kind of facility. They'll pay for school buildings where classrooms are happening or shops or wood shops, right? But they won't pay for that. It would be a $1 million ask. They already have the $275,000 in match that they need. So that's something that I'm going to propose to Scott and that group to come ask council to consider that. And then we're going to have to talk to the Parks Committee about maybe doing a smaller grant. Cause there's the large grant that's up to a million and then there's the small grant that's like 250 or something. So maybe we do the second phase of the campground in a small grant ask and we do that if that's something you guys are interested in. Cause they really don't see how they're going to get it without like a benefactor or it will take 20 years and they'll just be chasing the cost of it and never catching it. So just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. He kind of came up to me at the meeting and I didn't want to have you guys surprised if you, if he comes up to you or if you heard in the town that they heard that at a conference. It might be a nice, like, I don't know. I think it might be nice if the city helped them out doing that, but that's.
And then I really liked your idea that you brought up to me before, after you talked, told me about the price of this. And we might get ahold of Casey Garrett in the county and the CZ Trail. Cause he's, he's tuned in to grants for that.
For the campground, we're thinking maybe that big match that we have to raise.
Being right next to.
We could get.
Trail.
Apply for a grant that acts as the community match to get a bigger project through for the campground. Yeah. Collaborate. Bear Creek, Culver and Adams, as you know, that'll go away and the steel plate can go back to the county and we'll have a drivable, passable bridge. So that'll be good on Adams. Top lot. Flipping top lot. I don't, I think I might just have Tim cut some stumps and not wait for Richard to sign and just have him drop them, take the picture, send it to him. And maybe they don't even care anymore. I don't know. We've been maintaining that for 20 years as it feels like, but I guess it's only been 12 since 2000.
These tables are gone.
Well, they broke them.
Oh, again, the kids, yeah.
And so the wood shop was going to work on some and then we have some that we're just going to take metal framed. And then we talked about putting a metal bar under the pressure treated so that it can't ever have the give that lumber can have. Because that's really what they're doing to them is they're jumping on them and there's nothing bracing it in that span.
It's just skateboarding on them now.
Probably. Okay. We'd have any water service, that's still on our thing. That's the one that missed the trenching. When we had the trencher, it didn't get done because it turned wet. And so that's Bateman's and it's just really on there because Public Works wants to reduce the friction to the line going out there. So it's not a, I mean, you know, an emergency, but it just needs to stay there so they can get it done. RV, Anderson Park RV Site Increase. So this was Parks Committee probably six years ago. They really wanted to turn where we removed the playground into new sites. But with all the stuff we have going on with Parks, this one just keeps kind of not getting done and kicked to the side. So one of the things was maybe we move it to the bottom or remove it all in its entirety until we bring it back. Cause it was an idea, but it never had anybody champion it. And then Parks was like, oh, we want a playground over here. Oh, now we want a campground and we want docks. And Parks has got a lot of moving parts and this one. I don't know, just, or if you want, if you want it, maybe we should put money into the budget for it. Cause there's not money in the budget. So it's typically just grants that we'll be going for. Plus we not had a design of it. So it's kind of was like an idea that made it to the paper and then it's just floated on the paper this whole time. But we can leave it or in your next round, if you guys, I'll bring it back up to you about maybe removing it or. So the city equipment maintenance plan, this, I don't know that we, what we want to do. We separated from Brightly, so they made us pay the $10,000 that was the end of their contract, even though they hadn't supplied us with the product and ready to go. And then they tried to come back at us and say, then we owed them 20,000. So then Ruben got involved and then they actually sent me an email saying, would you like an exit interview? No, I'm not wasting any of my time with you guys. I mean, you already heard all the emails and the lawyers talking. I think it's plenty of time. So I don't know if we want to keep it on here. We're currently the way that we have most of the equipment is on like paper documents, not online, right? So we have maintenance schedules that Eva and James McMahon worked on because they were both in the army. So they kind of started a product that was tracking that way. So that's another one. Leave it or if you guys want it, want to, I don't know what you want with that one. We have all the data. If we had a different kind of product that came, but I'm like wary now to believe anything anyone says. And I think there's tons of those companies that came in kind of like vultures. When everyone got the COVID money and the CARES Act money and the ARPA money. We have this, the people, remember when Chief Connor pitched the $46,000 cameras? They sent cookies here to City Hall last week. It was like, and everyone's like, oh, cookies. And I was like, oh, it's that company, whatever. And everyone put them in the break room. And then like nonstop, they kept sending me, did you get the cookies? Did you get the cookies? And I'm like, we told you one time, we can't afford you. Like, we can't afford you now either. So I'm just suspect of going with anybody that comes in and says they've got the perfect product for us. So.
And was the maintenance program, wasn't that tied in with some stuff that Ben was doing?
Yeah, so Ben, that's, we have all the data, right? We have all of the, the assets numbered, we have all of that. It's just not in a program like their program that was going to kick out like a work order and you need to change the oil or whatever.
Right.
I have found though.
But wasn't there some of Ben's sewer and water?
Yeah, he has all that assets mapped still. So if we wanted to, we use it on a daily, but if we wanted to, if we found a program that you could like buy software and do yourself, then all of that data is still ready to go. We could just drop it in. But we haven't done anything with it other than just hold on to it.
Can we buy some new notebooks and tablets for the guys? They were using them.
Yeah. Oh, no, they, the guys still run the water and sewer off the tablet. Those are our overlays in the GIS mapping.
Oh.
That Ben updates as they put in a new valve, he'll go in there and update that it exists. And that the guys still use those in the field. This was more like when we needed a maintenance, the pump in a pump station, you know, like a six month reminder. It was kind of a honeydew list it was going to send out, which is why we liked it. And maybe there's a software program we could just upload onto our server, input the same thing and have it be like a calendar notification that sends it to us anyway. There may be something cheaper and more simple and more our speed. And then you don't have like a person you're trying to connect with at some company that ghosts you, kind of, if that makes sense. Water Master Plan Project Implementation, so that's the one that's signed off by OHA. And that's just going forward, right? They look at the next 20 years of water use, what your city might look like, what you might need to do. Most of our projects stayed the same because they're very large projects. And most of them are only going to happen if our population increases and the water needs increase. Like the reservoir or the reservoir out need or out not. Those are all still in the plan, but they're not something we're currently needing or going to start doing immediately.
Come off the list, huh?
Well, I don't, that's what I kind of don't know is like, it, that can come off the list, but I don't, I didn't take it off. Cause I'm kind of feel like this is your guys' list. So maybe in the next revisit, it could come off as complete, but then, I didn't want it to seem like, I'm not telling you. But it's done, but.
I mean, I think if, if we complete an objective that we've set.
Okay, and then reset.
I mean, that's my thoughts, but.
And then put it on there when it's a new one.
Yeah.
When it's a new idea. Okay.
Cause we have the MAFR water plant.
Yeah.
So it's there, but we needed.
Right.
Needed to spend the money and gather that resource for. So yeah, I think it's done.
So spell check strikes again regarding the whole dump site closure with the state. I sent more emails to him saying, can I just use a, like, what, what's the holdup? Can we just force them, an air balloon or use the kind when we do our monitoring wells where we send that down the thing and pull up the sample? What can we do here? I'm like, I need these things off my plate.
How deep is that well? By 100 feet?
I don't know. I don't know if Mary Ann knows.
As.
It's up on that.
Has anyone ever seen?
They could have that data.
Well, yeah, I haven't, I haven't asked anyone how deep it is.
Cause some of them, I mean.
Are you shocked at me?
No, we didn't.
You've never shocked it?
No, it's just been really the only thing, it's the reason the city is involved is because in order to get the old dump site monitoring that's required by the state to be closed out and no longer need the need for monitoring, we have to test that well and make sure we're not bleaching. And it's not contaminating. If it is contaminating, then that's why they're willing to put her as part of the orphan site project and do a new well on the state's dime. Right?
When was the last time it's been tested?
I don't know. She hooked to her dad's when it underperformed years ago. So I don't know. I mean, everything, it's not like rusted in there. I mean, everything, it's not like rusted in there. The rats did a number on the electrical, but the little shed and shop, it just looked-
I'd be curious to see what it's like now.
Yeah.
It might be clean.
Right.
Right. And that's why they needed to test it.
We're hoping it isn't.
Hoping it's not.
Yeah, because then they can put in a new well and still get off the, the monitoring. But I can look into the, I'll look into seeing if we know the depth. In the last scenario.
Understand a little more exactly more what's going on there.
Yeah.
And which is better route to go.
Well, and that's the thing is that if our dump is causing her home not to have a functioning well, she's connected still to the people whose well she is hooked to, but that will not always be the case. Those two properties will get sold to different people that aren't family. And they might, might say unhook and then Mary Ann's house is left high and dry instead of pony up for a new well. So that's why I'm trying to get them to get out here and let's get this dealt with. We're not left on the hook or we can, if she, yeah, there's lots of variables there. So- Anderson Park boat ramp, that was sent to Parks Committee and then collaborate with agencies. That's the one for the steelhead drop-in behind the park host at Anderson. That's the old, that old place the guys used to put in, but they get kind of torn up. And she said, are we supposed, do we have to allow people to do that? And I'm like, oh, yeah, it's a boat access. And she's like, well, a couple of them weren't able to get out, so they hooked their winch to the telephone pole. And I'm like, oh, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, or whatever it is. Yeah. And so that's one that, and it's only for a little window when they, when it's still too wet. Because by the time it's dry, nobody's putting in there anyway. So it's like a weird, I don't know.
December to then to March.
Yeah. So, and they haven't pulled the power down. So the city welcome sign replacement, I had the community members were the effort to start it and then you guys, and then you're gonna report back to council if you come up with a plan or idea or whatever. Brunnhilde Lake boat ramp, so that temporary access was fixed. And then this is one we'll also have to go for a grant probably to put in the, and I did mention it to Andrew and Robert to be thinking about it because they have put in that pour in place and push in. They have been part of a project like that, which is kind of what we're hoping we can do. So that's in there, planted as a seed with them. The Brunnhilde Lake docks, I did see in my email today that Topper has sent me back something. I didn't open it, but I saw Bruce say, here's our attached bid for the docks. And then I'm waiting on Oregon Marine Construction and I don't know if Steve's Marine will bid it. It was a smaller mom and pop shop, but I wanted to get multiple options. So hopefully by the end of this week, we'll kind of know who's the low bid and get them going on it. And then Lake Lake resolution, we kind of have solved it temporarily. So that's why it's still floating there in case it rears its head again. And that's what I got.
Okay. Joseph, can I, can we add something?
You guys collectively-
I'd like to add the status of the abandoned FEMA lots, the recording-
Okay.
From the county to the city of Brunnhilde.
Okay.
Status. I know you and I have been back and forth-
Yeah.
And working with Margaret and so forth, but I'd like to just add that up to the list, just to-
So FEMA buyout log?
Yeah. Because, you know, the county still has the title to those and we're-
Right.
We're maintaining them and it's a cost to our, our city and-
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, once they're recorded, then, then we could start leasing them out. And it's a win-win situation. It's good for the county. It's good for our community. And, and so I hope something could be done on that soon.
Well, it was funny because there was like a back and forth between FEMA and the county's attorney. We're all on the email and there was like a back and forth. And then there was like a side one where Ruben sent me an email just to me and he's like, seriously? That took him this long to figure out that this is that or whatever? And I'm like, apparently. Like, that's our side one was like, seriously? And mine was apparently. I don't know what is going on there. It is, seems like county's legal is kind of like the brake in the wheel or the, you know, the stake in the wheel of stopping everything. It seems like, let's just stop everything and slow go everything. I'm like, I don't know. I sent them, Dan Brown sent me the draft leases and the leases from the properties that they approved when we got the property, right? All, we've sent them all these things, the lease we drafted, they blessed last time when we thought we could lease them. It's, it's the most ridiculous thing. It's just so inefficient.
I don't know what the resistance is, other than, other than the, the $40,000 of her time that she spent on it.
But that just seems like what, yeah, I, I don't know why it's even taken that long. Everything was already in the works in '07. Like that transitioned, all the paperwork, FEMA's sign off, everything was a go. It's just the weirdest thing.
It is.
So that's where we're at with that, but I will add that to the list. Any other things that you guys are wanting updates on?
Well, I just want clarification on the core hill, I and I. And you got the part of the springboard project overflow line installed?
Yeah, part of the springboard project, the overflow line will be installed.
Will be. It isn't yet.
No, that's what I'm saying. It's part of the springboard project, in that project.
Just be installed. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, no, it's like overflow line will be installed.
Will be installed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Yeah. I decided to see that today and they already dug something. And I was like, wow, they're really open on it.
We're still waiting on all the transfers of the deed things for the, because we're, basically we have, we're giving Mark Weller 10 feet because the road is like encroaching on him. Then he's giving us the top triangle where springboard goes because that cross is his property. Then the Aaron Wallace guy is giving us the piece that springboard crosses. And then a vacation's happening down here to make that guy whole. So it's like a whole bunch of land stuff. So no, we haven't dug anything. We're waiting on all of the deeds to get recorded.
So on the, so street improvement plan execution, SCA.
Yeah.
So I, I contacted Brittenhour because we want to do our street.
Yeah.
So when I talked to Jeff, he says, well, they don't do any chip seal until September. So, yeah, I hadn't told you that?
No.
So that's gonna really torpedo us as far as being able to turn and burn.
Yeah, but I mean, what are we turning and burning for? Just to be able to apply?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can apply. You can apply if you're, if, if we, the paving's really sort of the most, right, the most of the expenses going. So you can apply if you're in, in the process. You just can't have outstanding ones like that aren't in progress and you're applying. Like you couldn't have been awarded and done nothing and reapply.
Okay.
We're gonna be-
So as long as we're in progress, we're all right?
Yeah, because they're-
See, I took it before when you guys said that, it was like, we had to have been completed by application.
The problem with, when you're remembering that is we had ones hanging out from-
Well, I know you said we could do two.
Right.
So that was always easy for us because-
But we had two still hanging out.
Yeah, and we got stopped because of that.
Right. But we only have one.
But I thought they cut it, you couldn't, you can only have one outstanding.
No, I thought you could only have, let me look, let me look.
Okay. I mean, that's why I've been like, okay, we gotta really execute on this. We gotta try to get it in there and get it approved and before we can apply.
And it was the two-year out one that caused us to skip. Let me pull it up.
So you, Matil's a good example of what she just said, right?
Well, we knew that. We had-
Right.
The one holding it back. Let me see again. Let me, I'm pulling up the, I'm gonna not get here.
Because if it's changed on us, then we're gonna have to restrategize or-
Well, and that's the thing, right. Do you mean to get in another 250 in the next round?
Yeah, well, was it 250 or 300 just now?
It's 250. It used to be 125 or whatever, every other year. So let me see.
Well, I think at the last it was 200. I know they'd keep kicking it up, but then somebody said that, yeah, but they took away, we can do, you could have two outstanding. And so that worked for us pretty well, but now-
Pull it up here. Sorry.
I mean, it's, I've just-
No, I mean, no, I appreciate it. Hold on. Trying to read.
And it sounds like the bid on that from Brittenhour probably came in a little lower than what we expected.
Yeah, we were anticipating like a buck 25 and I think came in 83.
83 cents, yeah.
But better, better than the other way around, like, right?
Although that includes our, one of our crew members loading trucks.
Yeah.
But I think that's still a deal.
Oh, Dale, it's gonna change forever.
Yeah, and that's-
I'll double check it though. I'm pretty sure.
Something, yeah, maybe for that line item, flush that out for us.
Yeah.
Because if that, I mean, it's a big deal to us. If we can't apply again this June for our next round, even though we're not completed, sets us back another year in June last year. And then we are awarded in the fall.
Let me see here. I just want to see their calendar, I want to see a calendar because it's hard.
Seems like they really got their calendar backwards. It's like-
They do, especially for paving.
Apply in the fall and award in the winter and then you have the whole construction season in front of you.
Right?
To execute.
Right.
Yeah, it's just like you're intentionally trying to model that kid.
I think I was, now that you're saying more of that, Dale, I was kind of under the same impression that we gotta make sure we're on top of it and get stuff done. Otherwise, we're gonna lose out.
Yeah. Is there a deadline?
I'm re, it's hard to-
Oh, okay. That's what you're looking for.
And of course, when I'm trying to find.
Well, like I said, you probably just, we could-
Yeah, so the, the period of, that you can have the open application is June 1 to July 31st. Is the last day you can apply. That's the open application period. So that, your June number was right. I'm trying to, not seeing anything that's like temping out. I mean, or reading through the whole handbook. I thought they had a calendar. That's why I'm on freaking calendar.
Yeah, we were rolling pretty good when we were getting that 200K and you could have two projects out.
Well, and that's-
It's like it's a sidewalk fiasco. We were really rolling and then-
Well, but I almost think we're gonna be pretty close in the next couple of rounds to not having anything.
Yeah, well, we are and then, but-
They meet their criteria.
I think that was the other thing that changed it, is they changed all the criterias.
Right. They made it more safer out to schools or dangerous conditions or all the things. But what I'm saying is we have very few on poor, if any.
After this round, I think the only thing left will be E Street.
Right, for the, once the sewer goes.
And, and then we'll have just a couple of different cores.
Maybe six.
Six.
Sixes.
And Fifth Street, we could chip seal.
Right.
Low use.
Yeah.
But the thing is, we really need to pull off a project at the bottom of state there from the water plant leak.
Right, but that's almost gonna have to be-
Take a chunk of it at a point.
Yeah, but it's, and we're gonna have to make it try and meet their criteria. Like, we could probably get away with the state because we're gonna ruin the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, curb, gutter.
Yeah, safer out to schools, kind of.
Use it to pave Louisiana that we didn't have enough money to-
No, yeah, no. What Dale's saying is, is like, we're doing the phase one redo of State Avenue because we know it's crowned too big and the sidewalks are insufficient and all that. So Robert's got that going. That's gonna be a big chunk of one. And, but we're gonna have to probably do it block by block.
Yeah.
Possibly more than 250.
Unless there's some avenue to get bigger funds.
Yeah.
And then right on its tail, once we get the state out of here on the ramps is Adams, Jefferson and Madison.
Right.
They're all starting, especially Jefferson truly starting to go away.
Yeah.
That's a high traffic area.
Maybe, maybe someone loves the city of Brunnhilde, the person that won the one point billion.
Yeah.
I was hoping.
Wasn't me. Wasn't me either.
It was a single guy.
Casey, Casey said it and I was like, oh, it's us. We finally hit the big one. No, it wasn't us.
Yeah, yeah, you can flush that out.
I'll look that.
Because we're gonna have to, I mean, staff and everybody, we're gonna have to, if it, if it's only one and done, then we're gonna have to get more strategic with it.
Yeah.
I mean, if the chip seal and, I guess Brittenhour, they just, they use that tanker for dust control. And then they don't want to mix those oils. And so they do the dust control for most of the summer and then they go out and do chip seal in September.
Okay.
And then they must do something with their tanker over the winter to cleanse it, so.
Well, and we can ask Deanna too, like, hey, if we get all our paving done, all the prep for that done, apply. You know, we know we're gonna be done in two weeks.
We'll be done in the fall.
The date of start, right? It's not gonna even be like, so yeah, that's something to figure out.
And, you know, I mean, this fallback strategy and our chip seal and we'll, I mean, we're doing a big chip seal project this time just because the money was there. But from here on out, if, if that's gonna hang us up, we do it with in-house funds.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and that's something too. If, I mean, one option is, we, I mean, I know you don't like leaving money on the table, but it's, I don't, and I, I'd have to look at Ben's numbers to see what the Brittenhour bid relation. But one option is you use ARPA.
Yeah.
And you just close out that project with just the whatever, 100 and whatever of paving. I don't know. Be the discussion point. But let me look into the handbook when I can read it. Any other things?
Nope.
So this was my other question. Oh, you guys. I feel like we did the quarterly review, might have been maybe one counselor's, maybe, maybe it was for one council member who didn't say what they were really feeling and they waited the whole year to then tell me all the stuff they were really feeling. So I'm happy to do a priority work session, but I don't know that the, like, stress of thinking, oh crap, every three months I'm getting reviewed, is very beneficial. You could always just make a quarterly work session update meeting. And then if you really, if, if I'm going south and you guys need to talk to me, you could make that one instead of like basically Stephanie has to send me a thing every three months that says, would you like to hold an executive session? No, I would, I'm fine with, you know, or I'd like it or I'd not like it. Like, there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes into something we're not even taking advantage of, I guess is what my question is.
Joseph, I was just gonna ask the council, is there any desire to go into an exec, executive session after this discussion? So it's up to you guys. I, I just was trying, you know, I'll be, where that leading Oregon Cities article was that kind of started this too.
What I would like to say, sorry, jumping in front of you. I don't know that there's any hesitation on any counselor or mayor's part to go to you when we have a question or if there's a concern. I know I don't.
Okay.
And I don't know about the others. I'm just, I don't have any concern or qualms about doing so. And I think that if there was something that did rise to that occasion, that would be brought to the mayor. The mayor would then-
Right.
Either address it with you or we would hold an executive session. But like you said, going south, unless it's that, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't see anything.
But you still said you would-
I would keep a quarterly- I would keep a quarterly priority update.
Oh, yeah.
And, and take it, make it separate from like, because I think any good employee, if they're earning their money.
Okay.
They're paying attention to that, oh my gosh, they could just sort of, like, every time we come to these, I'm like, has anyone got a problem they haven't shared? And then we're gonna go into the thing and I'm having to prepare for like, a review every time.
I, I would say that if, if we decided not to go to the executive session after our discussion of the priority list, that you're doing your job.
No, I know.
She's, she's gotta prep for that for every time, so.
Something preparing in my head, like, did something go south? Could one of, oh, and then I'm like sitting here like, I don't know how to explain that other.
It's like being told on a Friday, I wanna see you in my office Monday morning.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really.
Every three months, and that's not, in my, in my personal opinion, that's not appropriate.
Well, I think we've been doing it the right way, we've, with this priority list.
Yeah.
And then wait till, till July, when we do your
Yeah.
evaluation.
There's something rising and that, that.
And you guys collectively just tell Stephanie, we're scheduling an executive session for this eddy. Please contact the staff member and ask them if they want to close or open session.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really kind of a higher of your guys' decision, but we're preparing every time, like, we could go into it, which seems like it's just a little bit much.
Yeah.
I'm not saying, you could do it, I mean, you could do it on a Tuesday if you wanted, I mean, it, just cause we have these every quarter, doesn't, you could do it anytime.
And I, and I know, you know, one of the reasons they had this was if the conversation were to start to drift to where you.
Being reviewed.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not.
And, 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 you know, that's where we have to be careful. It's not a review process, we're doing the priority.
Right.
And, and again, yeah, I agree with you, this, this part here probably should be gone. If we do the review and counselors are having an issue with performance.
Right.
Then, yeah, we talk to the mayor, we schedule a meeting.
Yeah.
And you can prepare for it.
Right, you guys could review someone multiple times, doesn't have to be every quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, it just, it's, I feel like it's an old thing we had because maybe one council member, we wanted them to bring up their issues more regularly, was what we were trying. When I was doing something that was causing that council person issues, I wanted to hear about it in real time, not six months after. And that's why we kind of went that way, I think.
And then the last quarter, when we did this, we, we never went to executive.
Right, I don't think we've gone to one.
Since your review, I believe.
I don't even think a couple before that we went into one.
I can't remember.
Yeah, it's been a while since this has led to like, oh, we need to talk, but just, that was just my little, it's just, let's just do updates and not, you know.
Yeah.
Having us prepare for like.
Is that okay with everyone?
Well.
Well, we'll have to come out.
Yeah, you'll just have to.
Well, this isn't the executive session.
Yeah, right.
No, but you'll have to, it's a work session.
Right.
Right before, so you can't really vote.
Right.
In a work session, you're not, but we could bring it up at a council meeting in the state.
Put it on the agenda.
Quarterly work session.
So if there's no other topics to discuss, I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
At 7:25.
All right.
Good job. Excellent work, everybody.
Way to go, team.
Alrighty.